Good evening, everybody. I know it's not quite 6:30, but before we start the regular board meeting, we're actually going to have a check presentation from our superintendent's golf tournament committee. And I will not steal Mr. Gonzalez's thunder. So Mr. Luis Gonzalez, our director of family engagement and our community engagement, if he would like to come and inform us about what's about to occur. And kind of background too of...
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure and an honor to be here and standing here to present and to talk about the Second Annual Superintendent's Golf Tournament. Last year, it was a first annual, and we were able to raise over $30,000 in the initial first-time golf tournament headed by the superintendent and the committee. This year, we're so happy and so fortunate that the work of the committee and work of the donors, work of volunteers, we were able to raise over $100,000 for student scholarships this year. And so, a great... This is a great opportunity for our seniors. I just want to read off a little bit. There's a website, there's a page available on our website, and it says, "The Second Annual San Benito Superintendent's Golf Tournament was held at the Anasanta Golf Club in Wessaco. It was a tremendous success due to the dedicated efforts of the participants, of the tournament organizers, volunteers, and sponsors, where again, $100,000 was raised for San Benito High School senior students." I'll go on to, the superintendent will award a total of 25 scholarships. For the 2019-2020 school year, the scholarship will be $4,000 will be awarded to each recipient, $2,000 going for the fall of 2019, and then another additional $2,000 in the spring of 2020. Some of the notes of the scholarships, five out of the 25 scholarships will be awarded to students attending vocational and technical colleges in the fall of 2019. A minimum grade point average of 3.0 will be required of all applicants. And the deadline for application will be Tuesday, April 30th, at 4:30 on that date. Applications are available online, and I'm sure the seniors who are interested can also ask their senior counselors or even the San Benito High School principal to give them that direction. Exciting, exciting time for some of our seniors. Twenty-five seniors will get these scholarships, so we're very excited about that. So at this time, I'll go ahead and I'll ask the members of the committee to please come to the front if they can be recognized for the check presentation. Members of the committee included Orlando Lopez, Michael Vargas, Victor Rosas, Ramiro Partida, Daniel Gomez, Hector Madrigal, Dr. Andrea Cruz, Hilda Rendon, Vicky Perez, Luis Gonzalez, and of course Superintendent Dr. Nate Carmen. Thank you, everyone, and congratulations to all the students who are going to be awarded those 25 scholarships. Thank you.
So thanks again, Luis. I think for us, it's been very positive because there are districts out there who have, are going on their ninth tournament, some are going on their 12th, 13th tournament. Last year was just our first one, so we were babies in all of this. And the fact that we went from raising $30,000 last year to raising more than $100,000 this year is just a testament to, I think, where the board is in terms of its vision, each and every one of us representing what we want, and also making sure that even when we raise money and even when we're out there, that it is the gold standard, even though some of our golfing may not be the gold standard. But really happy for the kids that are about to receive these scholarships, because as of, you know, all of us who went to college understand very well that it's pretty pricey. And for those parents especially, you understand that it's pretty pricey. So thanks again to the committee. Can't wait to see where we are next year for our third annual. And then thanks again to Dr. Carmen. So he is the namesake, the superintendent's golf tournament. So thanks again. So with that said, this is the regular board meeting of the San Benito CISD Board of Trustees. It is Tuesday, April 9th, 2019, and I call this meeting the order at exactly 6:34 PM. Mr. Mendez, Mrs. Garcia...
Present.
Mrs. Weaver...
Present.
Mrs. Silva...
Present.
Mr. Lopez...
Present.
Mr. Rosas...
Present.
Dr. Carmen...
Present.
And Mr. Torres. We begin, of course, with our pledge of allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flags and our invocation. I'll turn it over to our secretary, Ms. Garcia.
This evening, we have two students from Dr. Cash Elementary saying the pledge of allegiance will be Andrea Garza. My name is Andrea Garza, and I am 11, I am an 11-year-old fifth grader at Dr. Cash Elementary. I am the daughter of Mirna Contreras and Adrian Garza. My favorite subject in school is math. I enjoy all the fun activities we do in the math class. I never knew numbers could be so much fun. Some of my hobbies are watching Netflix, listening to hip-hop music, and watching vlogs. It's fun to see what other people are doing around the world. I am also enjoy, I also enjoy running. It clears my mind, and it's a good workout. In school, I participate in many extracurricular activities. I am a member of the Dr. Cash Cheer Squad, National Elementary Honor Society inductee, and I am a Cash News Network anchor. Some of my accomplishments are earning all A Honor Roll or A/B Honor Roll. It was very exciting to learn that I have met the criteria for the Honor Roll, Honor Society, and I'm being part of the induction ceremony. When I grow up, I want to become a surgeon, because I want to help people. Okay, good job. Doing the... Doing the invocation will be Lauren Longoria. My name is Lauren Longoria, and I'm an 11-year-old fifth grader at Dr. Cash Elementary. I am the daughter of Leanne and Steve Longoria. My favorite subject in school is reading. Reading helps me relax and learn new things. I especially enjoy reading books about animals. My favorite book is A Dog's Purpose. My hobbies are watching five-minute crafts videos and running. One day, I hope to be a part of the San Benito Track Team and be the fastest runner. I participate in a variety of activities at Dr. Cash Elementary. I am in Honor Choir, Track Team, our new photography club, and I am a veteran Cash News Network anchor. This year, I have earned perfect attendance and A/B Honor Roll every six weeks. One of my most recent and exciting accomplishments was finding out that my photography submission placed second at the 2019 Rio Grande Valley Livestock Show. I plan on attending Texas A&amp;M at College Station. Upon graduation, I plan on continuing a family tradition of service to the country and join the Marines.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for the pledge of allegiance to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Father God, thank you for allowing us to gather this evening as one. Please provide our Board of Trustees and district leaders the wisdom and knowledge to lead our district. Give them insight to lead with integrity and many, and may their decisions reflect their guidance. Allow those in attendance the understanding of what our district is trying to accomplish. Please bring peace of mind to everyone as we start this meeting, and may your wisdom need them in their deliberations. We thank you today and every day for all your blessings. We leave this message in your hands, Father God, in your mighty and precious name. Amen.
If they can please come up?
The principal at Dr. Cash is Mrs. Delia Cornet. If she will stand up and be recognized? Come on, go. And if the parents are in the audience, if they will be, if they would please stand up and be recognized? Yes, Leanne, that's you. Thank, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Garcia. We now move on to special recognitions, and I will turn it over to our uncomparable, unparalleled, amazing Mr. Fernando Rosas.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, Dr. Carmen, members of the board and the community, tonight, we get to recognize a few other groups. I'm especially kind of tickled about this one, because this is my alma mater. It's a group from Fred Booth Elementary. All right. So we'll go ahead and have them come in. They were the elementary sweepstakes winner. There were 13 awards as part of the Texas Independence Art Show 2019 winners. This is part of the Texas Heritage Independence Celebration Association Art Competition. The sponsor is Natalie Montes, and in front of you, you have Daphne Trejo, Mila Villanueva, Genesis Alcantara, Sofia Velazquez, Kimberly Lincoln, Crystal Camarillo, Carlos Salazar, Lauren Portillo, Ariel Hernandez, Guillermo Olalde Jr., Hunter Coronado, Christopher Vargas, Ariel De Leon. The grades range from kinder all the way to fourth grade. Great job, guys. The principal, our principal, Nidia Espinoza, would you please stand? Please be recognized. Thank you. And of course, our parents, parents from these students right here, please stand up and be recognized also. Thank you so much. Get your pictures right now. They did an awesome job, and you can see some of the portraits that they're showing there with the awards also. Again, this was the Texas Heritage Independence Celebration Association Art Contest. Sweepstakes winners. All right, thank you. I actually still remember our school song. So, my, here we go. Yes, we do. Something we... Ms. Dodson...
Yes.
That was our choir teacher, and she drilled it to us all the time. So, yeah. All right, our next group, I'm going to let Mr. Eradio Martinez, Director of Choirs for San Benito CISD, introduce the next group. And he'll give me a break, because he's got about 900 names he's going to read, so get comfortable.
Good evening, members of the school board and all who are in attendance tonight. My name is Eradio Martinez, and I am the Director of Choirs for SBCISD. Each year, all of the secondary music programs in the state of Texas are evaluated at the UIL Concert and Sight Reading Evaluation. This evaluation was formulated in partnership with TEA in an effort to provide an educational assessment of the quality of teaching that is being produced in our music classrooms. Each evaluation consists of two components, musical performance and musical literacy. In each of these domains, UIL adjudicators rate each musical ensemble from a 1 to a 5, with a first division being considered a superior rating and the highest rating that our students can receive. The goal for every music ensemble is to receive a first division in both concert and sight reading areas. This year, all of our choral programs in every secondary campus in San Benito received first-division ratings at the UIL Concert and Sight Reading Evaluation in March. Because of this, every choral program achieved historical accomplishments that are unique to their own campus's history in San Benito. At this time, I would like to recognize each of these campuses individually and list their UIL awards. Every campus will have a student officer who will represent their choir and the trophies they received at the UIL Evaluation. We will begin with the Riverside Bulldog Choir, who had two choirs evaluated by UIL this year, the Non-Varsity Boys and the Varsity Girls Choir. Can the students come on over? Both choirs received first-division ratings in the concert domain. This is the first time that Riverside Middle School has had a boys' choir receive first-division ratings at UIL. The Riverside Choral Program is under the direction of Jorge Moreno and is assisted by Claudia Moran. The next program that will be recognized is the Miller Jordan Cougar Choir, who had three choirs evaluated by UIL this year, the Non-Varsity Girls, Varsity Girls, and Varsity Mixed Choirs. Each of these choirs received first-division ratings in the concert domain. Here are the historical feats for this campus. It has been over 11 years since this program has had more than one choir receive first-divisions at UIL. In addition, this is the first time Miller Jordan has had a mixed choir of both boys and girls represented at UIL. Furthermore, this is the first time in Miller Jordan's history that the choral program has three choirs represented at UIL. This demonstrates the fact that Miller Jordan has the fastest-growing choir program here in San Benito with over 160 students. And it's important to note, too, that Mr. Leanne is the only director in San Benito who doesn't have an assistant, and the students are reaping the benefits of your hard work, sir. Thank you. The next program that will be recognized is the Bertha Gavassa Middle School Gray Pup Choir, who had four choirs evaluated by UIL this year, the Non-Varsity Boys, Non-Varsity Girls, Varsity Girls, and Varsity Mixed Choirs. Each of these four choirs received first divisions not only in concert, but also in the sight-reading criteria. When an ensemble receives first-division ratings in both of these areas, they are awarded with what is called a sweepstakes trophy, which is the highest honor a music program can receive at UIL. The Bertha Gavassa Gray Pup Choir received four sweepstakes trophies, which is an achievement that has not been accomplished in six years. The Bertha Gavassa Gray Pup Choir is under the direction of Sarah Trevino and is assisted by Israel Inojosa. The final choral program that will be recognized tonight is the San Benito High School and Veterans Memorial Academy Greyhound Corral. This year, we had five choirs evaluated by UIL. They are as follows: the Sub-Non-Varsity Girls, Non-Varsity Girls, Varsity Boys, Varsity Girls, and Varsity Mixed Corals, Corrals. Each of these five choirs received first-division ratings in both concert and sight reading. Because of this, our Greyhound Corral received a total of five sweepstakes trophies. This is an achievement that has never been done before in the history of San Benito. The San Benito High School Greyhound Corral is under the direction of myself, Eradio Martinez, and the Veterans Memorial Academy Greyhound Corral is under the direction of Anna Garcia and is assisted by Bertha Guerra. I would like to close by stating that these historical accolades exhibit the growth of our choral programs in SBCISD, both in terms of quality and quantity. Our choral department is filled with directors who are genuinely committed to cultivating a standard of excellence in their programs. We look forward to sustaining the competitive culture we have established in our San Benito choirs, and will continue providing our students with an outstanding musical experience through the use of choral music. Thank you.
And really quick, really quick, Mr. Martinez, just you've given a thousand praises, but I think we should give him a round of applause. This is his first year as a choir director. We now move on to the superintendent's report. I will turn it over to Dr. Carmen.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. At this time, we're going to hear about cash account report and some other financial reports. I will ask Mrs. Rendon if she would present, please.
Good evening, President Vargas, board members, and attendees. Tonight is the financial reports for the month ending March 31st, 2019. We're going to start off with the cash balances. Our cash balances ending March 31st, 2019, within cash and investment balance is $74,114,855.89. Just keep note to, to consider here is, in here is the $30,774,021.43, which are the proceeds from the bond sale that was done in the end of part of March. Following into the student activity accounts, our student activity accounts have an ending balance of $446,428.95, and in your package, you have the owners of those accounts. Our next is, our next report is the comparison of the revenue and the expenditures to the approved budget. You might see it a little bit different than you have in the past, same format. We just had Skyward reconfigure some of the, some of the reports, so that we didn't have to do any manual reports. Under the local maintenance, which is the first part, anything starting with a 1, activity for the year is 70, we have received $76,851,303.11 of the anticipated $110,148,370. We have received 69.77% under our local maintenance. Under our federal funds, which is a midsection, we have received $5,160,508.86. We have received 90 point, I'm sorry, I take it back. It's separated between federal funds and then the, what I was reading is our grants. So going back, just the federal funds under the two account, which we're the owners have, is $327,264.30. Under the three accounts, those are accounts that were in partnership with another, with another district, we have received $5 million. Between those two, we've received $560,508.86. Our debt service, we've received $5 million... I'm sorry. And I can tell you, it's a new report, so I'm trying to read it here. The last report is our capital funds project, and that's where you will see the revenues that we have received, a total of $40,024,021.43. That does have some activity of $24,021.43 for preliminary construction costs. Under the revenue and expense account, these are our expenses. Under our local fund, $70,857,910.46, we have spent 65.51% of the budget, approved budget. Federal funds, including, we're going to include here overall, the twos and threes, $6 million, no, $4,669,015.8 under our funds that we have complete control of, and $1,101,639 under the ones that are in partnership with us, which are three accounts. Our debt service, we paid out $6,57,606.26, which is our bond payment, so we spend 99.97% and we're done with the bond payments for this year. And under the capital projects, we have spent none. Total is $82,686,171.73 expenditures. There's an extra slide here, which is a 224 and 225. These are funds from a prior grant that have, there's special ed grants, that they have extended it for one more year, and we're trying to exhaust the first in, first out. So in those funds, we spent $2,532,852.43, which is 99.85. So we have expended the first in, first out in the special ed. Going into our tax collection report, as of 3/31/2019, we have collected $11,787,345.41. Our tax levy is $14,041,549.45. We have, we have collected 83.95% of the tax levy. Our next report is, we are in compliance to report our investment report on a quarterly basis between the month of January 1st, 2019, and March 31st, 2019. Interest that the district has, has recognized is $236,339.62. And we have an ending investment, $69,944,528.92. Following off with the check disbursements, and I open up if there's any questions, any of the trustees have any questions on any check?
I think we're good, Ms. Rendon. Thank you for that...
Thank you, sir.
Exceptional presentation.
Thank you, sir. On the investment report, I look at the $30 million, it's made over $22,000 worth of interest since March 18th.
Sorry, what do you think that's attributed to?
Well, we have it all in a textbook. Interest rates have gone up, have been steadily going up. So we're looking at, at this point, we're waiting for our further investment in maybe a stronger interest rate, once we find out our cash flow for the projects, and they, we are to have a timeline of how much money we're needed, six months, nine months, or 12 months, so we can go a little more aggressive in earning some of that revenue.
And I'm assuming these are the conversations you're having with Mr. Trailer?
These conversations with Mr. Trailer and also TCG, which is our financial advisor. But right now, they're in a textbook, earning, they're safe, and they're earning, no one's touched that amount, so, but from March 18th through the 31st, which is a two-week span, has earned over $22,000.
Wow, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Love good news when it comes to money. Alrighty, we now move on to public comment. A person or persons wishing to address the Board of Trustees shall register with the presiding officer or designee no later than five minutes before the announced time of the school board meeting. State their full name, state what organization or group, if any, is being represented. State the topic they wish to address before the Board of Trustees. Please refrain from commenting directly on any individual, school district employee, or public official by name, but may instead refer to a specific employment area, job position. title, or the Board of Trustees as a whole, and refrain from attacks on individuals. Now, I'm going to read that again, as I normally do, because people have short memories. Refrain from commenting directly on any individual, school district employee, or public official by name, but may instead refer to a specific employment area, job title, or the Board of Trustees as a whole, and please refrain from attacks on individuals. San Benito C I S D Board Policy B E D guidelines require that the speaker be allowed only three minutes to give his or her presentation. Delegations of more than five persons shall appoint one person to present their views before the Board of Trustees. Presentation shall be informative and shall pertain to school-related issues. Attack on an individual shall be considered a disruption of the meeting, and the Board of Trustees shall not deliberate or decide regarding any subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. I will be taking the three minutes for each public comment. But the first we have up is Mrs. Alicia Salazar, and that's concerning the Houston chess trip. Welcome, Ms. Salazar.
Good evening. My name is, like you said, Alicia Salazar. I'm representing my child that went to Houston trip chess tournament. I think that when the bus broke down in Refugio, you guys were putting our children in danger because it would have broken down in the middle of nowhere, and it was very hot, you know. Also, I know you guys put a substitute after-school coordinator that was supposed to ride on the bus when he rode on the Suburbans that y'all have from the school district, or whatever you guys rented, because our former chess, I mean, after-school coordinator would always ride the bus, you know? And he would always be with the kids regardless. Also, you know, I know I see a former teacher that knows when, my son Ricky Salazar, and she knows well that my son's priority also is, his, his heart is in chess. So if you guys want to do away with chess, y'all better think about it again, because my son is always there, and he's always putting his effort. So think about our kids, guys. Come on, what if it would have been one of your kids, one of your grandkids? Because now my granddaughter, my granddaughter is starting to play chess. So, you know, y'all are telling us that it can happen with an airplane, it can happen with anything, but come on, come on, you know? Y'all took three, two Suburbans and a rental car, or whatever truck it is. Y'all could have put the kids and leave some adults behind and make sure the kids get here on time. Because I think, if I would have been riding one of those Suburbans, I prefer my kid to be on a Suburban and head home, make arrangement to my, for somebody else to pick up my son, and I would have stayed behind. I prefer to suffer the heat, not my kid, but myself. You guys could have tried and load up some kids in those Suburbans. As a matter of fact, why did he ride in a Suburban when he should have been on the bus with the kids? Apparently, somebody had told him it was okay for him to ride, when our former after-school coordinator had never rode on another vehicle. He was always on the bus.
That's three minutes.
Always.
Three minutes, Ms. Salazar.
So think about it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our kids are first, and y'all.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Ms. Oralia Elorsa, and she's also commenting on the Houston chess trip.
Hi, good evening. My name is Oralia Elorsa, just as you presented. This is the second time that I actually come to the board meeting. I guarantee you, this time, I'm not going to be emotional. This time, I'm actually not in very good terms with you. I've already addressed it. I cried my eyes out the last time that I came, and I begged you guys to please take care of our kids. Now, who was the decision-maker to cancel the flights? We already know that, because it's all over the newspaper. Now, what do you guys have against him? That's beyond me. But what you all did is attack to our children. Now, I did do a grievance, level one, and I just want everybody to know that. If you all need a copy and want to sign it and also file the claim, file a level one, I'm more than happy to give you. I have plenty of copies here, because that is what needs to be done, okay? I addressed the board, nothing was done. So I guess our next step is to put it in black and white to get something done. Now, how do you expect on the travel by the bus on the day of the competition that caused mental, physical fatigue affected students' games? That's my first complaint. Second, concerns having kinder, kinder through twelve in one bus, in a fifty-four passenger bus. You had fifty-three people there. There was one seat. For who? For the administrator that you all sent the night prior, because I was in everything, and I waited for that gentleman to get there, because he was the last person to arrive, okay? And I spoke to him, and I told him, "Look, sir, my name is Ms. Elorsa, okay? Remember my name. If something happens to my son in that trip, you will hear me." This is my jewel that rode in that bus. Something happened to him, there's no price. There's no way making him all over again. What you all did is put my kid in danger and the rest of the kids. I am my child's voice, okay? Mr. Garcia, I mean, the former director for the after-school program would always ride the bus, would ride wherever the kids were, that's where he was. Now, Mr., I don't even know what to call him, but administrator that you all sent, his own line said, I don't know, because I asked him, "Are you going to be here?" And I said, "Well, I don't know, I just, I just got an email the night before that I was supposed to attend to this trip." Really? The night before? That is how you treat our San Benito students? Because don't forget, you have a position here because of these children. Without children, you don't have a position. Simple as that, okay? So now, the kids were stranded in Refugio, not for one hour, not for two, not for three, for four hours. Can you believe that? Four hours in the heat? That is unacceptable, at least not in my book. And that is the reason why I'm here, because I want answers. Now, who was the genius that decided to cancel the seventeen thousand dollar flight that the kids were already granted? Because you know what?
Ms. Elorsa, that's time. Thank you.
That's what I thought.
Thank you.
So if anybody wants anything, the newspapers are right here. There's no answers, no questions.
Thank you, Ms. Elorsa.
Anybody needs one, I'm here.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. S.R. Garcia. Welcome back, Mr. Garcia.
By, by the way, they haven't answered what happened to the seventeen thousand dollars? They haven't answered? Anyway, I'm talking about justice. Sometime back, one of your former administrators allegedly committed some kind of sexual activity with another school administrator, and I think he was not reprimanded, he was not suspended. He was sent home for about six months with pay until he found a job, and then he submitted his resignation. I stand to be corrected on that. In my line, he committed a felony, in my line of work. On the other hand, the after-school administrator, he failed to make a request or something, and he gets the death penalty. He gets terminated, fired, gone, because he supposedly failed to do something, according to your superintendent. Who, by the way, whatever he does is a reflection of you board members. But you all said supposedly, "Oh, we don't micromanage, we don't tell him what to do." So it's a reflection on you anyway. Everything he does is a reflection on you. You don't micromanage. I think what he did deserves to get terminated. I think he should be terminated just because of that, that incident. The bus broke down, it didn't have air in the brakes, people. They had defective brakes. If that bus had, had an accident, it would have been a disaster. There was a bus driver on the bus, a parent who, I mean, a bus, a truck driver who called it to the attention of the bus driver, in case you all weren't told that. I think bottom line is, he's trying to get rid of the after-school program. I think he's already offered stipend to the principals so that they can run the department. Supposedly, that's the use. Another thing, this golf thing, and I don't mean, I, I think it was great, a hundred thousand dollars is good, but why is this thing happening in Westlaco? And why are all the donors, all of a sudden, coming forward now that the bond election was passed? We have all kinds of donors coming forward. And as far as I'm concerned, people, son puras papas. Son puras papas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. We now move on to Mrs. Garza, Ms. Laura Garza. Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening. Like you said, my name is Laura Garza. I am here today because I am, like mentioned before, I am my son's voice. My son's thirteen years old. He has been buldied for as long as I can remember. He, he has autism. This has gone back to first grade. I had, I removed my son off the bus because he was getting hit on the bus and paper thrown, but the cameras weren't working, and the bus driver didn't witness anything. I pulled my son off the bus. Again, first grade, my son was left wet and soiled for a couple of days, I don't know how many days, this teacher let my son. I had, he had extra clothes, pull-ups and everything at the nurse's office, and I never once received a phone call until the teacher personally told me to myself, when I picked up my son in a tutoring, which I brought it to the superintendent's attention, and that teacher was there, along with the principal, when I went to go discuss what was going on. And I was told by the teacher apologizing to me that I misunderstood the conversation she had with me. So nothing was done with that. Again, second grade, he was pushed, he banged his head on the wall, and I filed a police report. Fifth grade, the art meetings were interrupted multiple times, which art meetings are confidential, as you all know. Another thing, he was also, the principal made a comment to my son as a son, was that another child was having a meltdown, telling my son, putting him on the spot in front of his whole class, telling him, he, that's the way he used to look. My son, thank God, he no longer has his meltdowns at school, he's doing amazing. And for the principal to put my son on the spot like that, and then tells him, "He used to be like this, now you know how it feels," which she shouldn't have said. And I contacted T E A, and I said that was a form of discrimination. My son now is in sixth grade. My son was slapped, he didn't get to see who did it, because the bell had rang and he was putting his things away. So whoever did it got away with it. He squirted, somebody squirted ketchup at him. Cameras were reviewed, supposedly somebody was disciplined. I don't know if that's true. Last week, on Friday, he, the Friday before, someone opened up his backpack, all his things fell out, and everybody was laughing at him. My son called me crying, which, again, that's not right. And I've talked to multiple people, people, I've talked to a lot of people. I called the parental involvement, they sent out emails to five different people. I've only heard back from one or two. And I got a phone call yesterday morning that they review the cameras again, they rotate, nothing was caught, so nothing's going to be done. Again, that same day yesterday, around five o'clock, I got another phone call, that for me, that she felt that I needed to know, that my son was trying to fit in with football players. My son's in sixth grade, there's no football players, maybe, and I asked my son, "Are they taller maybe? Because they're taller, because my son is real small, petechy, he's currently taking hormone shots, because he's real small and has a hard time gaining weight." So this is what I'm told, kind of telling me, pretty much, "I have to tell my son where to sit now. Do I need to have him sitting with the special ed kids? Because my son can't sit wherever he feels to sit down, because if he gets picked on, it's his fault."
That's time, Ms. Garza.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And finally, we have Mr. John Shergold. Welcome back, Mr. Shergold.
And I want to thank and congratulate all the public speakers, everyone who swore an oath to defend this country. That's exactly why they've done that, so they can come and speak freely. I want to talk about the Districts of Innovation, and it's an honor to be here in front of this board. I'm speaking on myself as a, just an average working guy who grew up. My mom was a waitress, my dad was a union member. And the thing of it is, is that the Districts of Innovation, and I've noticed that that was on your agenda this evening, and I want to speak a little bit about that, because one of the reasons that the United States is a better country than anywhere else in the world is because of public education. And everyone on the board here has been elected by the people to express and to effectuate policy. Unfortunately, this District of Innovation that was placed into law by the state legislature is just a, it's like a horse getting out of a barn. Once you get out of there, it's hard to put it back in. And what I'm saying is, is that the District of Innovation is basically, in my opinion, a very bad idea, pardon the pun, because you have a charter school system called idea. But you have a situation where teachers can be told by each district that you've opted out of the considerations of due process. I don't think a lot of people understand that this District of Innovation could give a school district the power to basically turn schoolteachers and administrators who have contracts into people that are just at-will employees, that the state mandated salaries of schoolteachers can be exempted. The preparation time, the class preparation time can be removed. The ability of a teacher in order to have the same protection than they have enjoyed for, since the time the school district system became ineffective in this republic, Texas, is it really at risk? And I want each board member to hear that you were elected by the people of this district to protect the rights of the children in this district, and I know you do that very aptly. However, remember, the teachers are underpaid as it is. They're overworked. They're the first ones that get blamed. They're the first ones that get, they're your front line of defense. Think very hard about making changes to the, to the, to this District of Innovation.
That's three minutes.
Because the charter schools are not in the best interest, in my opinion, of the public school districts.
Thank you, Mr. Shergold. Okay, we move on from public comment to the consent agenda. In order to promote efficient meetings, the board may act upon more than one item by single vote to the use of consent agenda. Consent items placed on the agenda shall be marked with an asterisk. Consent items are items for which no board discussion is anticipated and for which the superintendent recommends approval. Prior to the time which approval of consent agenda is had at the request of any member of the Board of Trustees, any item on the consent agenda shall be removed and given individual consideration. We begin with our action agenda under Business and Finance. One, request approval of budget amendments for 2018, 2019. Question? Consent? Number two, request approval to extend the depository services contract for an additional two-year term. I'll question that one. Number three, request approval of engagement letter between San Benito C I S D and Burt McCumber and Longoria L L P. I have a question on that one. Number four, request approval of R F Q for insurance agent of record. I have a question on that one. Number five, request approval of renewal of agreement between San Benito C I S D and Absolute Business Consulting Group for the 2019, 2020 school year. Have a question. Question by Mr. Rosas. Number six, request approval to authorize the superintendent and/or designate to join the Tasby Energy Cooperative and enter into a future contract for electricity when rates are favorable to San Benito C I S D. Question? Consent? Number seven, request approval to award R F P dash zero-three-one-nine dash R A S B H S remodeling of C N D wings and counselors area at San Benito High School for Section A, that is painting and ceiling grid. Question?
I have a question.
Question by Ms. Garcia.
I have a question, yes, sir.
Alrighty. Number eight, request approval to award R F P dash zero-three-one-nine dash R A S B H S remodeling of C N D wings and counselors area at San Benito High School for Section B, that is flooring. Question? Consent? Number nine, request approval to purchase desks and cabinets for C N D wings at San Benito High School. Question? Consent? Number ten, request approval of resolution for safe routes to school. Question? Consent? Number eleven, request approval of architect services agreement between San Benito C I S D and G M S Architects for San Benito High School and Sullivan Elementary. Question? Consent? Items under administration. Items under administration are number 12, request approval of interlocal cooperation contract between Samino C I S D and University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley, for the 2019 tech prep summer program and 2019-2020 school year. Question? Consent? Number 13, request approval of memorandum of understanding between Samino C I S D and Texas State Technical College for the dual enrollment program for the 2019-2020 school year. Question? Consent? Number 14, request approval of the district improvement plan for the 2018-2019, sorry, 2018-2019 school year. Sorry, that's a typo for those following along. Question? Consent? Number 15, request approval of the campus improvement plans for the 2018-2019 school year. Question? Consent? Number 16, request approval of the selection of the instructional materials for English Language Arts and Reading, that is, English and Spanish, handwriting in English and Spanish, spelling, English learners' language arts and personal financial literacy as voted by the Instructional Materials Committee. Question? Consent? Number 17, request approval of the district of innovation plan. Question? Consent? Number 18, request approval of district calendar for the 2019-2020 school year. Question? I have a question on that one. Number 19, consideration and possible action of P B K architect contract for multi-use indoor facility. Question? Consent? Number 20, request approval of board minutes. Question? Consent? So can I please have a motion to approve under business and finance, numbers 1, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, and 20?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Lopez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Weaver. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. The first question item was the, number two, request approval to extend the depository services contract for an additional two-year term. I questioned that one. I had a couple of things. First, Mr. Endon, I just wanted to clarify that, and I think I had run this past our attorney, Mr. Torres, that we indeed did not have a two-year contract with Burton. Or actually, no, we're talking about depository services. I'm moving along too quickly. So for this one, for the depository services, so I remember we had this on the agenda previously. And I think we had agreed that as a board, we were interested in just seeing what was out there, given that we have been with Frost Bank, I believe, who does the depository services for so long, just like we've done in the past with a couple of items, including the milk, and including one other where we hadn't gone out to bid for 20, 25 years, which in my belief, and if you're a financial auditor out there, I don't know if I'm correct, but that's not a best practice for this. And so I believe with Frost Bank, we're hitting our six-year mark.
Yes, this went out to bid back in 2013, in the late fall. The state allows you the original and two other extensions. In the fall, November of 2018, the board has extended an additional two-years service. So TA put out that we could extend it for another two years. This is our depository. If the board wishes that we need to go for R F P, we would. This would start in September.
And I'm just comfortable too, because I think before any of this board arrived, this R F P was executed. So given that an R F P hasn't been executed for this vendor, for either of us here, I think it'd be prudent on our part to just go out and have us as a board make that decision. And if we'd like Frost again, we'll invite Frost Bank.
By all means, sir. It's up to the board. If those are the wishes, we will comply with those.
Does anybody else have any comments?
Yes, I agree. I think it's best practice that we go ahead and take it out to bid, Mr. Endon.
I will, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna go ahead and motion that we table this item. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lopez. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda was the request, the approval of engagement letter between Samino C I S D and Burton McCumber and Longoria L L P. I had a question on that one because I believe we ran into some speed bumps with this financial auditor, specifically towards the tail end. And I know I remember Mr. Mendez, he's not here, but him commenting on that, specifically on the submission to T E A. For me, that was a red flag because the reason we went out to bid from the previous financial auditor is we encountered the same problem. And I think when we went out to bid and we said we would give, because there were two competing firms that were very, very close to each other, and we said we would allow this firm to execute and do what they needed to do for about a year, and prove to this board that they were indeed, you know, I guess for lack of better terms, better than the previous. And it seems that they failed that. So for me, I'd like to go out to bid on this one as well for our financial auditors. And I believe I've had similar conversations, at least with administration, about what happened at the time of that submission from Burton McCumber.
Okay. Truly noted. Just as a quick, I will consult with counsel. There was a R F Q that was done in July, and then there was an engagement letter the following month. And it indicates two years, but I'll refer to him if, on legal purposes, if we can. This is the engagement letter was approved in July of 2018. And we pulled it, and we have the backup that we can provide counsel to see. But if it's R F P, that's fine. We can do.
I think it was administration's recommendation for two years, but I don't think the R F P engagement letter was for two years. Then why are we getting it brought back this time? So I think it was administration's recommendation for two years, but I'm pretty certain that we're not bound to the two years.
Okay.
We'll review it, and if it is, your wishes are to go up for an R F P.
Okay. So are we fine?
Yeah.
So I will motion that we table this as well. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Silva. Sorry, Ms. Silva. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. For number four, request approval of R F Q for insurance agents of record. For me, this struck me as a little odd that this was on the agenda because we are currently going through the bid process for our health products, both health and products. And so I was not at the committee meeting, and I did not get clarification on why this was on the agenda, because I know there were two board members that put this on here. And I have yet to hear from either of them. So if either of them can articulate their sense of why this item is on the agenda.
When I had it and put it on the agenda, it does take two board members. Also, so the public know, I did call four of us, and I never told anybody how to vote. I just told them, hey, I'd like to put this on the agenda. And that's so for clarification. Based on number two, what you stated over here, that agenda item, in reference to Frost Bank, going back to bits, because it's been with us for six years, and I'm doing kind of the same thing. I'd like to bring them up to bid. It's always, it's already been over two years already. So I'd like to, and them coming in for two years.
I think it's been one year, Mr. Rosas.
They're coming back to two years. Okay? And not only that, I'd like to know, I went ahead and went to the, what do you call the H R, and asked, how often are they here to represent our teachers, employees? And base the agenda on these individuals, they haven't been here for a while. Are they subcontracting their services? If that's the case, you know, I'd rather go with somebody else. So that's something I put on there. And like, say, how often do they visit the schools? And that turned out to be not too often. Okay? So I'm just putting it up there. And it doesn't mean that they're not gonna be back based on the voting, but I'd like to hear somebody else put out on the bid.
And also, I have also heard, you know, complaints from some of the teachers and staff that, you know, like Mr. Rosas said, that, you know, they're not around when they have questions and, you know, they have problems with certain things, and they don't get, you know, the answers, and they don't know who to go to. So that's just, you know, some of the problems that have come up, you know, that have been approached to me.
Mr. Endon, I got a quick question. As far as the board getting concerns and all that, I mean, that happens on a daily basis. But as far as our staff, how happy are they with our, with our agent of record for the health? Have you guys received any concerns? Dr. Carmen? Anybody have?
I personally have not. I have been taking care of the health insurance. It is under Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services, but I've filled in because of the background. But I don't get the complaints, but they wouldn't come directly to me.
For clarification, how often is this agent of record in the school district?
I don't visit with them on a regular basis.
Talking to Lucy, the one in charge of the, she's, the only thing she does is basically online emails. So I think the human factor plays a lot. A lot of people don't know how to use a computer. So if she's not showing up, I think we need to go out.
But I think we need to clarify the roles, first and foremost, we need to clarify the roles of the agent of record for the, for the health, because those products were already here when we first came on the board. You know, she came in afterwards, so those products were already here. So I think, you know, for clarification purposes, Dr. Carmen, can you elaborate on exactly, you know, the concerns?
Right. So I'll try to answer the previous question and that one. I have not been approached with concerns over, over the agent. There are always questions about health insurance, whether it covers enough or not. But as far as the agent of record, I have not. And I recall when the board split the health and the optional products, that the role of the other company would be to provide an agent in our district two or three days a week, as deemed necessary. We started off the year with that individual here three days per week and didn't have a lot of people coming in for assistance. Once, once that enrollment is done at the beginning of the year, there just were not a whole lot of people coming in, but.
Mr. Carmen, who was doing the enrollment?
Right. So again, when the board split that, the S I G Insurance Group.
So it was not the agent of records?
That's correct. They took on the role of bringing agent into the district.
Okay. So we subcontracted. We're spending more money on somebody else. That's what we're doing. That's my point.
I think, I think to clarify, we, as a board, we split the, the contract between Ortigón Insurance and S I G, and it was a conversation between Ortigón and S I G, not the board, to who's gonna do the enrollment and who had the better capacity.
True.
So at the time that they shared, not only the voluntary products portion of it and the health portion of it, it was up to them to determine, of course, in consultation with Mr. Torres, who would be best and who would be best equipped to enroll. So that was a conversation amongst them. That wasn't anything that was dictated by the board.
Okay.
So I guess my concern is, all these questions should have been answered at the committee meeting. It's very obvious. So for that reason, I suggest we table it for now, and then we take it back.
I believe they were answered, and they were put on the agenda because they were answered. Some of the concerns you have, but you didn't make the meeting. The president had made the meeting. So some of those, there were four board members that put in the agenda as to what it is. Right now, aye, take a vote on it, and if it doesn't, it doesn't. But another question I have to, Mr. Carmen, I ask you in reference to who was in charge or who was taking accountability, how often the agent of record was coming in? You didn't know? Correct?
That's correct. The insurance agent.
So I went to Lucy and talked to her. There's a lot of, I understand, there's a lot of organizations within the school district, but my thing, my concern, you know, it's for the teachers here. It's not about me. I came to make a difference here. So I came to the committee members at the committee meeting to talk to people here and asked, I never did want, tell them to vote a particular way. So my thing is, here, he wants to table it, didn't show up. The president wasn't here either. Table it probably. But aye, take a vote. If it happens, it happens.
So before we take any motion, I would like to express a couple of things. So just like I started my original comments, we are literally in the middle of a bid process for the health products and the health insurance, literally in the middle of it. So for me, I think if we take a step back and breathe, it would be irresponsible for us to change the agent of record, someone who is knee-deep in providing this district the support. And it was in January, I believe, or February, that Ms. Ortigón came up here and gave us the timeline of what was she, she was going to do as far as seeking out those products and whatnot. So that's my first point. My second point about attending committee meetings, I fully understand. Some things come up personally, and so I would hope that my colleagues understand that we do get busy and we do have some obligations where there are entities that actually do pay these bills. So I hope you understand that. And I have 30 years to retire, so I don't have that luxury. So I hope you understand, in the future meetings, I would give the same respect to somebody who missed those committee meetings as I hope you would give those who miss those meetings in the future. But I am requesting that we, or that I motion to table this, the request for approval for R F Q for the insurance agent of record. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lopez. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Nate.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The item is tabled. Okay. We're gonna do by a show of hands, for those who motion for or approve the, to table the approval of R F Q for insurance agent, for those who approve to table. Those opposed? Motion to table is approved. We now move on to number five, request approval of renewal of agreement between Samino C I S D and Absolute Business Consulting Group for the 2019-2020 school year. We have a question by Mr. Rosas.
Yes, I do have a question, Mr. Carmen. In reference to this, we got a newspaper in the valley, in Samino. We got Valley Morning. We get Channel 17. Why are we paying a lot of money for this product? I mean, we have an opportunity here within ourselves to promote. What are we paying this? I mean, we got a nice Channel 17. Isabelle does an awesome job. We spend a lot of money at will, and my question is that.
Right. So the services that ABC provides for us are all about public relations, communication, consulting. They have designers that assist us with print material. They do assist us currently with our quarterly newspaper that is getting ready to go to a monthly newspaper. I think that they offer some additional resources for us. I'm not saying we couldn't eventually get our own internal department up to that.
At what price do we pay this?
Right. It's right here in board book. It's $9,000 per month.
And when they distribute this information, how much more do we pay? Do we pay? We, who distributes it?
So for the newspaper? Depends on, on the amount of newspapers we put out. So there's a charge to print, and there's a charge to deliver.
So there's a, there's a $9,000 cost monthly plus an additional for distributing out?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay.
And whether we made that newspaper, newspaper ourselves and printed, there would still be printing charges and delivery charges. But yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. I would like that information for myself.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve?
Table. A table.
You motion to table?
Table.
Okay. Mr. Rosas' motion is to table. Does he have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weaver. By a show of hands, all those who motion to table this item. Motion does not carry. I request to approve this motion to, or I make the motion to approve the renewal of agreement between Samino C I S D and Absolute Business Consulting Group for 2019-2020 school year. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Moved by Mr., or second by Mr. Lopez. All those in favor, put by a show of hands. All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. We move on to number seven, request approval to award R F P dash zero three one nine dash R A S B H S remodeling of C N D wings and counselor's area at Samino High School for Section A painting and ceiling grid. Ms. Garcia.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to abstain from voting on this particular item. My nephew is, is the owner of Vice President Anoble. My nephew is, is the owner of Vice President Anoble, so I want to go on record as abstaining for this.
All righty. Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Garcia. So with Ms. Garcia's abstention, do I have a motion to approve this item?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Lopez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Silva. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? And one abstention from Ms. Garcia, motion carries. Our final item is number 18, request approval of district calendar for the 2019-2020 school year. That was my question, but I think I pulled that out because, for Dr. Carmen.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Yeah, we, we submitted in board book, one option on the off chance that the DOI was approved, and then a second calendar on the off chance that it was not approved. These calendars went out, we gave three options, an A, B, and a C, with the early start date of August 14th, should the DOI be approved, and then we gave three options in case it was not approved, with the regular start date of August 26th. So based on the approval of the District of Innovation Plan, the recommendation is that we go with option B on the DOI calendar, that did carry the majority of the votes of the campuses.
I hear Mr. Carmen's recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Moved by Ms. Silva. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Lopez. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, we move on to the next agenda item, and I know they're setting up, so we'll give them a couple of minutes. That is the review of contract between San Benito CISD and Brighton Group LLC.
Good evening.
So yeah, Mr. Palacios, if you want to introduce yourself and your team again, I think we know you already, but.
Absolutely. We're happy to be here. I'm Joseph Palacios with Brighton Group. I have Pep Picasso also from Brighton Group. I've got Martin Glazier, Brighton Group. We got Laura Warren here with us as well. Our engineering group was working late in the field today, so they weren't able to make it. We do have some others that should be showing up just shortly on those that we're using for the transportation access with the, with the county. But first and foremost, we want to thank San Benito CISD for engaging in our service. It's been 90 days. It's been a quick, fast and furious 90 days. You went out for a bond, or, excuse me, you went out for RFQ out in December 3rd. We were happy to submit our RFQ. Our contract was initiated in January 10th. Since then, we've been pretty busy. So I'd like to offer an overview of what we've done to date, and then we'll go into the contracts and pretty much the overview will kind of cover a lot of the points related to the contracts. And then we're willing to take any questions as we go through. I will be presenting the overview. We have Laura Warren here on some of the technical aspects to our presentation. We also have Pep Picasso. He leads our legal division within Brighton Group, go over any contractual issues. But first and foremost, again, we started in January 10. Immediately after, on, from January 8th to the 13th, we began, we began our project planning initiation with our Brighton staff. Again, it's not just me there at the office or our subconsultants. We have a, a large array of employees as we identified in our RFQ. We have professionals from engineers, we got inspectors, we got obviously our legal staff and architectural staff that assists us as we go through. On January 19th, and we have all the submittals to those board meetings that we attended, we had a workshop presentation to talk, to talk about the scope and location with the owner. It was here, it was held here. On February 12th and the 13th, we had tabletop discussions with your staff where we talked about the program. And if I can turn it over to Laura, she'll talk a little bit of the technicalities of what we did and performed on that meeting.
Thank you. And I love when my clients ask questions, because that means they're engaged and they care. And on the selfish part, it allows me to show up and show, and tell you, you know, why we're the right choice, but you have three complex projects. One of them, it's the least complex one, which is the multi-use facility. I understand and receive some of the questions, and they're very valid. You know, a lot of things are going on, and we need to know where we're at and what is next, so perfect timing. We're still negotiating, you know, we're one of the firms of the two largest projects, and timelines begin according to what resources they have available. Some firms are capable of performing all the, all the tasks within house. Some of them, like the one that we have, that has been selected to perform or to execute these two projects, have a multiple array of consultants that live in multiple towns. So how fast or how slow they can coordinate, it will vary. We will monitor them, and we have requested as part of the request for qualifications for them to provide us with an outline of timing of things. Budgets, they were preset. We will be monitoring those, and that's part of the negotiations. So what we did is I prepared a timeline for you all with, along with Brighton Group, and tells you more or less on the weeks and how long we expect things to, to take care. We have some homework items that we will need your assistance with, and we have several sites selected for the three projects. We need to tie those down. What infrastructure, road access, infrastructure, I mean, do we have enough water coming in, gas? What, what do they need for this building to, to happen? That will vary in times. Hopefully, we can pick the one that meets your needs and the school needs, and we don't just go with infrastructure, because sometimes that can lead into a project that is not designed to grow or beneficial for you, for all of you and the students. I presented a preliminary program, and in one of them, during our work sessions here, it was discussed whether or not to have a multi-purpose or convention center type of facility that will serve more programs, or one that was strictly a performing arts center, which I understand was presented before during the ballot selections. We did both for you to review and consider. The negotiations with, in this case, RFA, can be affected depending on what kind of programs you choose to have. So it's tricky. We are suggesting at this time, even though it's one architectural firm, to separate the contracts, because again, there are two timelines. They want to do everything at the same time, and I said, no, one can be performed at a shorter time than the other one. How we can track and monitor and have the tools for us to be able to report to you, this is how much money we have spent, this is where we are, it's, to me, basic. And we don't want any cloudiness, you know, under one contract for two major projects. Or if you prefer to have one contract, then I will respectfully request, and I put that on our notes, to have two exhibits that clearly define the timelines of deliverables and separate fees. That's, that's on the table so far with them, plus the negotiations. We are tracking what has been done with other projects and what I have done myself, and to be able to, to compare the fees. We have a more educated board across the Rio Grande Valley, and we're handling things with a business point of view, and I applaud you for doing that. And that was very clear on the questions that you have posted today on the different contracts. We want to honor that kind of code of ethics. So let me know.
Yeah, and if I can, I can continue on our timetable. Our legal team prepared all the RFQs. We communicated with arc, all architectural firms, coordinated all, they see the interviews as well as all the additional information needed for, for the board to make their selections. Talk about negotiations, and Laura kind of touched up on it a, a bit. You know, these negotiations, we're representing you as a board, your best interest. Today, you approved a contract with PPK. It's not as simple as them just providing a contract, it's literally going word for word legally down every clause of every contract. We would love to accomplish that in one meeting, as you can see in our timeline, it was multiple meetings. We had a total of three meetings with PPK. We continue to negotiate with RFA on the two other projects. That one is a lot more complex, because there are a lot of more, more variables to those projects. It's not that we don't, we're not coming to an agreement, I think we're on our fifth meeting now, but it's a lot of responsibility that they're undertaking, and we want to make sure, as our team is brought forth on the legal, the architectural, the engineering, all the way to the construction, we want to make sure that nothing was missed. We still have ongoing negotiations with RFA. We look forward to wrapping those up this coming week. But as you can see on the timetable, we have had, we've, we've identified those respective meetings, as well as had all their backups, the red lines to every potential AIA contract that, that we've been negotiating. We've also worked on some additional deals. One was your parking lot. It's not in our scope, but we expressed to Dr. Carmen, we're here as professionals, and if there's any assistance that we can offer, we're here for them. We overlooked, we looked at the original RFQ that was dated, I believe in February. We offered, our engineers offered some recommendations, and we've done material force test, engineering survey. We also offered our engineering evaluation, and we've redrafted all your RFQs, and they should be going out for bid. That's really important, because at the end of the day, if you can't compare apples to apples, and it's not, it doesn't identify quantities and all, then you're not going to get respective bids or, or more competitive bids. If there's ambiguity in anything, I guarantee you're going to pay a lot more. And that's our job, is to make sure we research, research all of those variables to make sure that we can make the proper recommendations for the board. As you know, and, and as, and we're, we thank you for the opportunity to work on your LED program. At that time, when we were asked to look at it, we have Marki Glazier here, we reviewed all the, the choices you had versus replacement versus retrofit. On the replacement, on the, on the new fixture, I mean, it was in the tune of over $3 million. I mean, we made recommendations, we analyzed it, we thought the retrofit is, is a better fit for you, and saved you from having to go through that, through that expense. We've had multiple meetings here at the district, and we continue to oversee that project day in and day out, and we're going to continue to do so. As we're getting ready, we are in that phase, we're in the contractual phase. It's very hard, you know, for the general public isn't seeing brick and mortar, but this is the most critical period we're ever going to have. The first 90, 120 days are the most important. If you'd ask any of the firms, they'll tell you, from being selected to having an actual contractor negotiate is within a 30-day period is a daunting task. The average period is 90 to 120 days. In some cases, I've been there before, on, in your seats, and they've gone as far as four to six months. We are optimistic, we have one in already, insight within 30 days of being selected. We're optimistic that we'll come into terms with the next firm on those two other projects within the next week or so. We are asking for a special meeting to approve their contract. We continue to work diligently, and I'd like to take some of the, I was given a list of clauses within the contract that, you know, we wanted, there was some, not concerns, but they wanted to assure that, that we're in compliance with our contract, and we challenge, we, we wholeheartedly are excited to be here to talk about those clauses, because they're very important. The first and foremost is about a schedule, and I'm going to turn it over to Laura to, to answer those, and then I have Pep to offer some insight on the, the other contractual clauses as well. Yes, we provided in your booklet. First is the agenda item, there's a, right behind that is our contract. We have highlighted all the sections pertaining to the questions that we were asked to provide insight. The first one is on page three of our contract, and I'll turn it over to Laura to offer insight pertaining to the schedule.
Thank you. Mr. Palacios, another thing that I noticed that Mr. Palacios has that is unique in this incredible team, I, it's been a joy working with them. So they have the, an attorney who has vast experience in public administration projects, publicly funded projects, so it's, it's a good thing to have backing you up and knowing how to go about things. So we prepared three project timeline drafts. Why? Because your projects are different in nature. In one of them, no issue with the first firm and awarded. They are also a business oriented firm who does publicly and privately funded projects, so they saw our point of view, and they wanted to get started and get it going. So.
And if I could add on that, you know, I don't see, I don't know if PPK is here right now. Yeah, David's here. I want to thank David and, and the PPK team. We heavily negotiated their contract, and it's very tough, because again, we're representing the, the board at this point. We were able to get really good price points, just like in our contract, and we'll talk a little bit about our rebate and, and some of the clauses that we chose and how to apply our contract. But David and his team agreed contractually to a good competitive rate out there, we felt was a discount. In regards to special services, they included it all in a 1% to offer everything under that package. We felt it, we negotiated well with them. They came to terms with what we were asking. We think it's, it's, it's a good rate for San Benito. I would just want to thank them personally to offer those rebates to San Benito. And, and today, I was happy to see Mr. Rosas today. We had their first design meeting today. In about two, three weeks, we're going to have a lot of information to be able to build out a lot of the architectural design and get into obviously some construction documents, but I'll turn it over to Laura on that one.
Thank you. Yes, of course.
Just for, for the record, the Texas Education Code and the procurement codes of the state of Texas say that before we can go out for bids on the, the contractor, which we're going to use the CMAR process, we need to pick an architect. So at this point, we already have a finalized copy of the CMAR RFQ. So literally, we picked the architect today, we'll be bidding out the, the CMAR process tomorrow. So we're not missing literally any, any minute in this process.
And it may seem, when you see our contract, oh my God, there's a lot that is needed from them. We haven't seen all these components. Some things need to take place before the other ones happen, so we're here to show you all this process and what's coming. I tried to put it in, in, in simple words, put it in my stuff as if I never done this, if, how would I want somebody explaining this to me? So bear with me. Okay, so I'll begin first with the multi-use facility. Our architect hit the ground running. They had already their preliminary design presented, and this was based on the program that we prepared based on the, on our workshops.
Just refer to tab three in your book.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, tab three.
Okay, so I, we have placed a check mark on the items that have been achieved, and budgeting again, it was preset, and this is based on historic numbers?
And if I could clarify, there's, on the 3 million, it's actually 4 million.
Oh, okay.
We corrected that earlier in the document.
Thank you.
4 million is the base, contingency half a million. It's the one that we presented with the PPK this morning.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
And just want to make sure that's, that's clarified.
Thank you. I appreciate it. The site information, survey between clip meets and bounds, utilities available, topographic conditions, topography is important, how your site is, the level of it, you know, will prevent from having unexpected flooding, and very much unwanted flooding. Environmental surveys, I understand those are ongoing. Road access evaluation and the service availability review, I think we have already cut that tight down. Legal information needed as required for bonds, we have Mr. Caso taking care of that. The number four construction standards, we requested that information, I understand that your facilities department has a comprehensive one, so none of that had to be prepared, so we put a check mark on that. The RFQ has been issued. We have selected the team, the interviews, the shortlist interviews, and the design contract negotiation, as you are aware, has been completed. So what is next? We understand that the draft copy of the request for qualifications will come back, you know, come to your table for your discussionary review and approval. Then those are issued. Once, if you choose to shortlist or have a finalist list, then we'll follow with the interviews and the selection part of it. On the design phase, which some of this will overlap, and I'm assuming that for schematic design, and I'm suspecting you'll go shorter than that, three weeks? Again, they took the ground running. Then you have all the steps there lined up, meeting with you guys, evaluating additional alternates, making sure that we have all the building department and zonings on board. And we try to do that at the very beginning, so guess what? We apply for permit right before, all the subcontractors go into bid, and your building permit goes through like butter. When we involve our city officials or building officials into this, and they're part of the project, they take pride on that. So when things are issued for permit, they're already familiar with it, their comments have already been incorporated, and we're letting people out for success. So it just goes through. Under design development. Under design development, that's really when we start getting all the consultants and all the engineers that aid the architect onboard. Once you have an approved foreplan and outline, that's when we start looking at all the next level of details. Where do you want your lighting? Do we have these fans? We start selecting some of the finishes, but the engineers start working on the foundation and all your structure, and the construction manager at risk starts looking at what we can do to make sure that we keep this under budget. It is at this time that we start doing what we, what I call a shopping list. What alternatives do we want? Okay, guys, so if the subcontractor sharpened their pencil, and we have some extra money, how do we want to spend that money? What can we do? So it is at this stage that we start lining that up. We submit drawings for review and approval to the board, and we'll aid, we'll be there next to you. And then we go to construction documents. Here's what the NITC gets in, and the drawings get this thick, and a book gets done. The drawings tell you where and how much, and the book tells you all the technical data that needs to be complied, all the standards, how many submittals, what kind of quality level we expect. So one is just as important as the other. And it gives the tools to the construction manager at risk to be evaluating things in a deeper level, and have their comments also incorporated, and the result is hopefully no change orders. Unless you want to add some things, then those are welcome. On the auditorium facility, you also have some of the timelines, yes?
I have a couple of questions on the, on the, what is it? The multi-use facility.
Uh huh.
Okay, this is new to me. You have to remember, I, I'm new at this.
Oh, no, and we're here for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, but I, I remember that we met here that, that day, and we discussed what we wanted, and I wanted, I wanted a field of 110, 100 yards, what is it? Was it a?
Yeah, but then we clarified that we wanted to have just the, the football field size, so.
Just 100 yards, and then 10 yards on, for the end zone, extra, 10 on one side and 10 on the other, so.
I miss your end zones. And that's what the schematics are for. And that's when we issued the design program for review, so you guys can review it and approve it.
Okay.
And when you guys get involved, and that was discussed when we were reviewing the things, you know, all the, all the plans.
I remember, I told you, I said, I want extra yards on the, on the end, because they're going to run, and they're going to run what? Just 100 yards? And, okay, here I am? No, I want them to run like they're running for touchdowns, and yay, do the high five or whatever.
We can add that.
Okay, and, okay, and, and I, so what we discussed that day here, you gave him all of that information?
Oh, yeah, even with the adjacent C's plan, and they actually did a beautiful job with the schematics. But we may have to end, and this is where some of the heartburns will begin. We have this wonderful wish list. Once your construction manager at risk, which is going to be responsible in delivering construction at a maximum cost, it's going to be like our policing, you know, for the financials. They're going to say, okay, I don't feel comfortable having this, we may have to look at this alter, alternative design to adjust it to meet a certain budget, because we have a cap of $4 million. And, and that's our homework. You as a board, us as, you know, as your liaison here, looking after things, and making sure that both the contractor, CMAR, and the design team have all the tools to be successful. If they're successful, they win, and you win, and the students win, so. But yes, we'll, we will make sure that that's incorporated, and we'll start looking at it from the budget standpoint.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Can I add something to, Mr. Palacios?
Yes, sir.
We met today, and safety was one of the main concerns in reference to the sidelines and the, and the corners of the touchdown areas. And plus, the more we ask for, the more, more cost, and, and consider this, we're a board of seven, so it's not I want, it's what we want, okay? And sometimes the best, I, Jamie and Sonia, we went to visit a brand-new sport facility in Austin. A lot of people say, well, you go have a good time. No, we went to visit schools, we went to visit auditoriums, with different aspects. I know the cost, they have more money over there, but we went to visits. And nets, like I said, we need nets, and you know what I'm talking about, baseball players, soccer, kickers, and all of that. So it adds up a lot, what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, okay? So 100 yards, they had a 70-yard over there, but the college was using it for football and baseball, okay? It, so it's something we can look at, we can afford it.
You know, Mr. Palacios, I got a quick, quick input here. Everybody's excited, everybody wants, you know, all the bells and whistles, our kids are excited, our parents, you know, we're just here to, you know, to roll out a plan. But I think at the end of the day, talking to Dr. Carmen, talking to the board, I think it's imperative that we get our administration involved, our, our, our athletic director, our band, everybody's going to utilize those facilities, because those are the, the people on the ground, those are the, the experts in, in educating our kids, and, and, and actually knowing what they need in order for our kids to use those facilities to the maximum of its capability. Yeah, I mean, we can, I mean, we can sit here and talk about, you know, X, Y, and Z, but I think that's one of the major components of having you here, so you can answer Ms. Garcia's questions and see, can we do it that way, or Mr. Rosas or whatever.
And I'd like to add to that, so, so we've done a great share of tabletop discussions with all your, your staff, and you had board members there as well. Since then, we've met multiple times with the architects. That's, that's how we use it as a parameter to negotiate their contract. A lot of the pre-scoping that Brighton Group has done through Ms. Laura Warren has allowed us the availability to lower that rate, because a lot of that, and, and catalyzed the development of these, this project that we're talking about. Just today, Mr. Rosas was in a meeting with PBK, as were, and, and, and your superintendent, Dr. Carmen, and they, you know, the PB, uh, PBK folks came up with innovative ideas to even maximize even more, and make it even more aesthetically pleasing, where it really doesn't drive the cost anymore. We talked about site location, and came up with a lot of other ideas. So this process is going to go on for probably the next couple of weeks. It's a hard drill, where you get a lot of architects involved, you get a lot of planners, you get a, you know, from the utility side, we're looking at it no different, to make sure at the end of the day, whatever we move forward on, we're going to maximize every dollar that you put there. And not just that, you get the best return on investment once you go to construction at that point. So it's, it's a drill that we go through, and although the general public does not see brick and mortar dollars here, right now, you don't see this thing going up, there's a whole lot that's happening, countless and countless of hours, through everyone within our operation, our subconsultants as well as our consulting architects that are being chosen to do this. We had a few of them fly in today, and they spent the better part of this morning with us here in your, in your building. So we're excited to continue on. So really what we're covering is, is the item on their contract where they wanted, where we were, we were asked to elaborate on the project plan. This is what Laura has been talking about. Those are all the elements of this project plan. And once they go, they're going to evolve as we go, no different than as we're designing, you know, the design's going through, we're doing the, the valuation, we're coming up with constructability reports. All of it's going to get down to the bare bone, bare fact of what is it going to cost us? So a lot happens in this phase right now. We want you to be a part of it. We invited Mr. Rosas today, we're happy that he attended. We are running every day, all day long. We invite you to our office and meet our staff as they're going through these. We invite you to every meeting, we're going to, so, so we covered a lot of what's on our business plan. And, and I'd like to go back to our contract to start covering really the elements that we know that are going to, we're, we're going to cover as we go through this process. If you go back to our, our, our contract on page, forgive me for flipping around through here, just want to make sure I get back to our contract. So we went over 1.37. It's the anticipated scheduling information we had, we talked a great deal about that right now. I'm going to skip over to sections 3.2 on the project management plan. As we started on their RFQ, we give, we gave you a general idea of what Brighton Group does in regards to the project management plan. That's delineated on this sheet right here. Now from going to this, from an RFQ process, and going straight into our contract, what we just described, and some of the deliverables you have on hand, kind of already start identifying a lot of these coming into fruition. The next one I'd like to cover is 3.34, the project management information system. So we have owner insight. Part of the negotiations with our architects is that we're on the same platform, the very platform that every board member, from Ms. Garcia all the way to Ms. Silva, will have access to at any point of time. Everything you see here in our documents will be uploaded in the owner insight. Part of the negotiations with our, our architects is that we're all on the same platform, so there's, there's a great deal of access and transparency to everything that's going on through this process. What Pepi Caso is handing you is your login. This will be your login information that we are, that we, we will be presetting each board member to have their access to all of these documents. Now, they're your documents, they're not our documents. Everything that we do has minute notes, they have, obviously, there's letters, there's everything that we have to, through due process, as we start going through this. Now, our contract reflects not a month, not the three months on your schedule, this is literally over a two-year period, could be less, could be more, who knows? We're hoping that it'd be less. With our, 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 our hope is that we continue to materialize and, and maximize the time we have to make sure that we can get through these, you know, the design phase into construction. So we covered pretty much in debt with the information system. We are also using Microsoft Project, we're using Dropbox, we're using every tool that there is to make sure that any moment you are seeing the documents as we're producing Yeah, and, and that's what was suggested, owner insight, for those that use it, it's still complicated. For those who are unfamiliar with owner insight, we will have to set up these tutorial systems or, or sessions, so that we can start going to how to access. How do you look at the dashboard in regards to what contracts have been let, at what budget rate? Where are they based on percentage? We're going to set these in services where we kind of go through it with your staff as well as board members. And then at the same time, we're going to make sure that there's a portal in there that could give a status update on any relevant part of the project to your general public, to your taxpayers. And we're going to work on that. But as you know, this is the process that we go through. Now we're moving a lot of this information straight into these portals so that you could have access to. But again, I'd like to say that these are, these are, you are the owners of this information. If I can go to, I want to go to compensation. You know, I talked about, you know, negotiations with our architects. It'll be no different with negotiations with our civil engineer, with the civil engineers, geotechnical. What we're asking for is to assure, to assure that we negotiate at the best rate possible, not for our consultants, but for our, for our school district, for the school district. In ours, we took that into consideration when we negotiate our contract, and I, I want to thank your superintendent, as well as your legal counsel, who has given the authority in December to negotiate our contract, and every term within our contract. We competitively, and, and we know, project managers, they get compensated over in the entire program. We chose not to do that. It could have been the total amount of funds that, that, that was in these programs, we chose just to apply the compensation rate to construction only. In our, in our contract, it stipulates that. And we thought that that would be a, a rebate, a discount that we'd offer the school district in good faith. That's in the tune of 180 to 200,000 dollars. We had a discussion on the day of this contract being awarded. I was even asked a question, would you like to wait to redraft it and make sure that it's within the program? And I chose not to do that, just because, again, in good faith, we wanted to be a fabric of your community. So that's on our rate. I know that there's a question is, well, is 4.5 high or not? Well, and, and, you know, we have a rate at 4.5 to the entire program with your neighboring school district of Santa Maria ISD. Your average percentage, depending on the size of any project, and the call of the duty based on the project management we're offering, it could be construction management, contracts management, it's anywhere between 3.5 to, to, to 5%. It could be even more. There are some project management firms that are at 6% to 7%. We chose not to do that. We chose to offer not just project management services. It's not engineering services, it's not architectural services, yet we have architects. It's not engineering services, but we have engineers. It's not legal services, but we have attorneys. We will do, that's another thing, is we offered our inspection, no different, under the project management services, where we are there. And on our contract, it says daily inspection, daily presence, and that's what we're offering. We felt that we wanted to be not like all firms, by offering things that aren't typically offered. Most even say, why would you do that? We did it because we believe in our product. We believe that if we're good, and we can be competitive, and beat our competitors, and offer better service, then there'll be more work in the future. And we want to really echo that in this one. It means a lot to us. That's on compensation. I know there was a question pertaining to the rate itself. We didn't set the payment schedule. There could have been milestones, there could have been anything that was presented to us by our legal counsel, as well as your, your staff. We didn't object to it. There's a question, well, at what point is this project going to take two years? We hope not. It could be 15 months, it could be 22 months. But I'll tell you, our 4.5% is capped, whether it takes 18 months, 24 months, 28 months, it's capped. Not just to add that it's not the full percentage of the construction costs, it's based on 30 right now. We don't know where we're going to be, it might be 31, 32, it might be less. If it goes lower, then our rate goes lower. There is a retainage there in that, in that equation, to make sure that the school district retains a percentage regardless, all the way to the end. So there'll be a balloon payment at some point at time. But we don't, that's nor here nor there, our focus is this, the active involvement, the daily presence, to make sure that we're catalyzing all of these processes for you, to make sure we get you to construction, that at the end of the day, you get the best guaranteed maximum price for these particular projects. We are working with Cameron County right now on road access. We had, we've had several meetings with your county officials, as well as CCRMA, TechDOT. We've given you an illustration of the access to what would be your performing arts, as well as your auditorium. Those in there are these, the milestones that we're going to be hitting once we start working with TechDOT on the access. Now, our hope is to find some discretionary funding, so we don't tack on or utilize any aspect of your bond dollars for those types of expenses, which are typical. We talked about the example of what we've done in your neighboring community with Santa Maria. We get, and thanks to Commissioner Gus Reese, the county offered complete construction to the access of their new high school. We saved them about $220,000 on that one. But that's what we're going to do, the same thing here. We're trying to find ways to address issues where we can preserve every bond dollar you have. We had, this morning, we had a meeting with Commissioner or City Councilmember Guerra. We talked a little bit, we've went to the city offices already, and talked to Bernard and some of the, some of the other folks in the city. So we can start, start talking about lift stations, water lines, everything that's going to encompass a cost, how can we partner together? Every project we have, we saw that we have partnership agreements. I believe we're going to have our partnership agreement, interlocal agreements with our city, with our county, to address some of those associated costs that are going to come down to these projects. And we want to make sure that we can supplement them with other funding sources. And that's going to be our daily goal. We have daily meetings with these officials. President Vargas, you were at one of those meetings with Commissioner Garza, with Cameron County. We had a lot of discussions pertaining to the indoor project. But these are, a lot of the meetings that we're going to continue to have discussions, so that we can maximize every dollar. I'd like to go back to one last, and I think we covered all of them, but the last one is our insurance. Now Brighton Group, we are a professional firm. Brighton Group is not Joseph Palacios, although I would love it to be, it's not. Brighton Group is a firm that is an engineering firm, although we were not hired as engineers. We have professional liability with errors of omission, and we have complied with every aspect of our policy. We have our insurance agent here, I know Ms. Garcia contacted him, and asked questions pertaining to our policy. We love the transparency, and I'd like for him just to confirm our professional liability with error of emissions, as well as everything that was called. Our legal counsel, Pepi Caso, went through all the things that needed to be done in December to make sure that we added San Benito as an addition, as an additional insured, as well as our subs have listed San Benito as additional subs. So while we're providing architectural, engineering, or for project management or inspection, San Benito is in good hands. All our policies and everything that the RFQ has asked for, we have complied to. And I don't want you to hear it from me, better the younger writer as well as our insurance.
I'm Juan Rodriguez, if you ever have any questions, I'm here in West Lico. And I'm here to acknowledge that he, he has complied with the errors and emissions insurance, we do have the general liability workers comp. He has pretty much said with everything that, that's required of him to get done, his, his policy's been in effect. You guys are certificate holders, so if there's ever any issues, you'll get notice, but, you know, Mr. Palacios and his group, they've been clients for quite a while. They are insured through a, a big company out of Dallas, Amwin's, and they represent some of the larger companies out there. And, you know, if y'all ever have any questions... And if y'all ever have any questions, feel free to direct them to me. If I can't answer them, we can, you know, pass them on down to the underwriters or, or the carrier themselves.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is, is this a professional liability? Is this what he has professional?
It's professional errors and liability insurance for the Brighton Group. And it covers as, as an umbrella, if he hires engineers, they're covered under, if they're working under the Brighton Group, they're also covered under that plan.
So this is not a commercial insurance then?
He has commercial general liability.
I do have a question.
On top of that, he's got the errors and omissions as well.
I got a question for our legal, Mr. Torres. During this whole RFQ process, did he or did he not abide by all the rules and qualifications? Because what he's presenting here should've been ironed out months ago. I don't understand what the issue is now. Why, why are we bringing this up again? I mean, I know there were some questions, but as far as...
I can't speak to why it'd be brought up again.
No, but I'm asking you a question as far as did he meet all the qualifications in the RFQ process?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thanks.
What we did provide is an updated, and I wanna thank our insurance agent. This is as of today. We're still in great standing with all our professional liability, general liability, automobile liability, workman's comp, and our professional E and O policy. We're gonna go ahead and just, and in here, and Pep has provided the entire underwriting document, it's a big document. It, 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 it clarifies all services. I also wanna add, and if I may, I'm sorry. I, I'd like to add, we've gone through this rigorous process with Hidalgo County, City of McAllen. We are vendors to other organizations, no different, other government institutions that require us to comply. We are on the pool of engineers at Hidalgo County. In this case, you hire project managers, but we're still here in our professional capacity, whether our architect, whether our engineer. That's the benefit of having us. That makes us very different. We have legal counsel as well. That, that makes us very different than anybody that submitted for RFQ services for project management services. So in that, I'd, I'd like to state also that we're compliant with every client that we're, we're working with. We're on a professional pool that preserves all of our insurance requirements as well as all the other requirements that they're mandated to follow. And we have complied and we're on those pools.
I have to add something.
Please do.
I just learned a lot of new things here. I'm working in the one-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar court expansion, or the new court for Hidalgo County. And I find it extremely refreshing that the lead team, because I was ready to issue, we actually have the insurance for you guys. And I've never been covered by a lead team member. That is very generous. Second, he's done a lot of effort in saving you money. I always do flat fees in my contracts because it assures my clients that I'm not going to balloon or increase the cost of construction for me to make more money. He by action, by action, has been meeting with a lot of public entities using his reputation and very well-established connections to bring you savings. And his fees are based on a construction cost, even though he's also, our team is also managing the design team. It had to be said. Wow. Wow.
We believe in San Benito, that's why we did what we did. Recently, I know there's an effort for kids. I, I have kids. They're in school district, public systems. We believe in giving back to our community. We recently participated in scholarships. We didn't do that for board members, and I, I don't mean that offensively at all. We didn't do it for any other reason. And this is not the only entity that we've done it for. We've done it for everyone we've represented, every single one of you, you can ask every one of our clients, because we believe in their cause. And that's what I promised you when we were interviewed, that we would become a fabric of your community to make sure that we give back to those that you represent, not individuals. We've been a professional firm, we've been professional from day one, and we will continue to offer the respect to every board member, whether you agree with us or don't agree with us. We are gonna continue to comply to our contract and make sure that what we vowed that day, we will deliver without, without prejudice whatsoever, no matter how difficult things can be. And that is the job of a project manager. It's not fun negotiating with architects when they're trying to get more. And, and rightfully so, they're fighting for their marketable rate for what this project calls for, and we're still asking, there has to be more that we could do. Let's share our costs. Let's figure out how we can just drop it just a bit more, because you vowed, and when this bond went out and the people voted for this, three projects need to be built with what was sold. We're optimistic that we're gonna be over, under that mark. Your superintendent said, this is the bar, and it is below what you have authority to sell. He said, Mr. Palacios, Brighton Group will get this, we will, we will hold a retainage. We said absolutely, regardless of our rebate discount. That is, we're all in this together. And we're all in the same boat together because at the end of the day, this is who we're going to be accountable to. And I, I love the fact that we're here today. I'm glad that Mr. Mendez, and I'm sorry he's not here, was the second to ask for this to be on. I know that we've had rigorous discussions about all this stuff with your legal counsel and, and staff and other board members, because I've had that opportunity. I've had the opportunity with Mr. Mendez twice to have, to have lunch and go over these things. You know, I've offered it to Ms. Garcia as well, no different. We are impartial to any board. We don't have personal relationships here, we have professional ones. And we respect them wholeheartedly. We respect your duty, but we also respect our very contract and what we were asked to do, and we're gonna continue to do that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Palacios.
Can I have some questions?
Yes, ma'am.
In this drawing right here, when the residents of San Benito have asked me where this is all gonna take place, and I tell them, Lord, it's gonna be here, one of the things they take a lot of pride on is the tower, the water tower with Freddie Fender. He's on, he's on, he put us on the map with Johnny Carson. I don't know if you know that guy. But is it gonna take away from Freddie Fender? Is it gonna, I don't know if this is a question that matters.
It, it absolutely matters. That is, that illustration is just to talk about the Tech Dot requirements, what those principles are on the white-hand side. We are going to work with, once we negotiate the contract with ROPA, to make sure that we catalyze everything that's around it, to make sure that we don't offer a disservice to the Freddie Fender Tower. We talked a little bit to approach the city as well in regards to the water tower as well. As we're working with the lift station, then we have the address, we're gonna look at all those elements to make sure, and it's no different than we did for the indoor practice facility. We were able to talk about a lot of those variables this morning, and went every bit of two and a half hours, but to make sure that we maximize position and that we didn't give up any opportunity to showcase these three buildings. That one in particular, we're gonna do the same thing. And we're gonna invite every board member to a lot of these discussions that we're getting through those, those processes, to make sure that before we get guaranteed maximum prices from our contractors, that we made sure, and for nothing, I mean, Dr. Carmen did a great job today, and I know Mr. Rosa did a great job today, we want you all to be part of this, and we're gonna continue to have you in those discussions to make sure before we let any contract that we cover everything.
Particularly don't touch water towers. And if you haven't access to the water tower or buy it, it kind of creates a boulevard-type entrance, and it gives the city an opportunity to do maybe a, a more beautiful landscape project there where you can have annuals, you know, and, and bring some of the school colors. There's some very pretty purple and yellow flowers, you know, that we can grow here locally. So, I actually think having it by there, it's, it's a good idea. It makes people turn up and look, and it becomes a more enhanced landmark.
We, we were traveling earlier, the team.
Mr. Palacios, if you're talking, there's a mic on the podium that you can use as well.
We actually looked at other options here in this location. We looked at going, looking to go behind the tower, behind the tower. We actually looked back here to look at a road, but we felt that this was the cheapest option to keep the cost down. We also looked at widening this road and making a connection over here to help the school circulation as well as the facility. But when we decided to have two structures here, we felt too much traffic was gonna impact the school, so we kinda eliminated that.
Now, Mark's, Mark Tech Dot, a lot of the, the milestones here are based on Tech Dot requirements. Our engineering, they're not here right now, but we went over a lot of this, and we're gonna continue addressing those kind of issues. This is one example, many examples that you'll have access to, we'll look at, we'll go over. We're encouraging more in services, sit down, let's go over through these, a lot of these moving pieces. As you see, just in ninety days, a lot has happened. If you look at our timeline, there hasn't been a day we have not been moving. We're gonna continue on this very aggressive schedule, but assure that we don't miss anything as well. I wanna thank our partners, I wanna thank your staff. We're gonna continue moving this along, but I think we covered pretty much everything.
Questions, please, I mean, we love, we love questions.
Yes. Mr. Palacios, I thank you for coming prepared, very well prepared to answer my questions. I have them all answered very much, and I did take the answers down. I'm still concerned with your professional liability on the insurance, but Mr. Rodriguez and I have agreed that we'll meet either this week or next week, and he will help me understand the insurance that I'm asking him about. But I will, I will meet with him and he will help me out. But I have concerns on your insurance, sir. That's the only thing I have concerns on.
If you may offer those questions to your legal counsel, that is our personal policy. It's not normally typical.
Legal counsel to Mr. Torres?
Absolutely. We'd be happy to go down every aspect pertaining, we've done this multiple times already. We do have a certificate, it's a valid certificate. We are in compliance to your contract, we can continue to focus on those elements, but I would prefer that, we've, we've gone through this multiple times already. I would prefer that legal counsel, if he has any questions, it is a, a policy that's to our, to our professional company. If there are any questions, please voice them out to your legal, they'll get with our insurance agent.
Okay.
Go over those.
Okay, that's fine, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you so much for clarifying that for me. Thank you. And again, thank you very much for your cooperation and helping.
And I wanna thank you. I, I know these are hard questions to ask, and, and we're not afraid of, by any means, we encourage it.
And they were good questions, they're good, solid questions that I needed answered, and you provided the answers for me. My concern is still with the insurance, sir. That's all I have.
Are you an insurance agent that you need to know? Are you, are you qualified to know what to wonder, what somebody's giving you?
I have, no, I have good questions that I need answered.
Well, she's, I would prefer that, if there are questions, please ask us. He's here right now, we'd like to get through this issue.
So, that's okay.
I would love to get through this issue. It takes away from our primary scope, is to perform our duties.
Exactly, that's, that's exactly where I was headed, Mr. Palacios. I mean, you know, the majority vote, the majority of the board already voted on this, okay? For us to continue to revisit this in open session is to me, it's absurd, to be honest with you. You did follow and you did comply with the RFQ process according to our attorney. So as far as I'm concerned, the majority of the board voted on it. I don't, I don't understand why we have to continue to revisit this, because you've addressed this, concerns over and over again for the third, fourth, fifth time already. So the thing is, I don't want it to hinder progress, I want you to focus on what you were hired to do, okay? And that's to represent the board and represent the funds that the bond is allocating for our projects and to move these projects forward. I think wasting time on this, continuously going over it again, I think it's just...
It, it's stipulated all in our underwriting, an underwriter will not insure you for these errors of omissions without a rigorous questionnaire. We've went through all of that already. We have professional engineers full-time in our staff. We are a engineering firm. There was a question whether or not we're an engineering firm.
But you are not licensed.
We are licensed, ma'am.
You, you, sir, you, Mr. Palacios.
You don't have a contract with Joseph Palacios, ma'am, you have a contract with Brighton Group. This is my license.
Is your company state of care?
Yes, ma'am, right here. This is my license number. We'll provide it to your legal counsel as well. This is the letter from the Texas Board of Engineers.
It came in February the fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
But you didn't hire an engineer, you hired a project manager.
Yes.
And this is from, I mean, this is our firm.
Yes, I can see that. Twenty nineteen.
And, and I'm sort of, I have come in on boards and people.
You're his subcontractor, you're like an apostle, yes, you are not, you are not the company itself, you are his apostle.
I remember you submitting a qualification, someone in your department.
We're all insured, we all have complied to every provision in our contract. Underwriting has issued our policy in December. Again.
Yep, and we thank you, Mr. Palacios. Like I said, I think it would be an understatement to say that we're beating the dead horse here. I would like to, thank you first of all for coming in, bringing your team and being extra prepared. I wanna underscore Ms. Garcia's comments of, it was very, it was a great presentation. There were hard, there were hard questions, and you, you answered them. But again, to Mr. Lopez's point, these were questions in the RFQ process, and they were already answered, and this is why we pegged you against other firms and why you were chosen. And so, it is my hope that we always continue this dialogue, we will have questions, but in terms of the manner in which we seek them, I think needs to be looked at again in terms of the professionalism. But I'm gonna ask for a motion to end discussion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Lopez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weaver, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Sorry you had to go through all this.
It's okay, look.
Thank you, appreciate it.
It's yours money, and we're here to answer some.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to convene into closed session? Moved by Ms. Silva, do I have a second?
Second.
We don't need it. Oh, yeah, closed meeting. Discussion under the authority of the Texas Government Code 55.071 for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorney on any subject or matters by law. 55.041 for the purpose of appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Number one, employment resignations and retirements. Number two, discussion and consideration to reemploy probationary contract employees to include teachers, librarians, counselors, nurses, and administrators. Number three, discussion and consideration to renew term contract employees to include teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses. Number four, level three grievance for Ms. Elvira Vega. Number five, discussion and consideration of the proposed non-renewal of the term contract of A. Longoria. Number six, discussion and consideration of the proposed non-renewal of the term contract of C. Evans. And number seven, discussion and consideration of the proposed non-renewal of the term contract B. Geta. We convene into executive session at exactly eight-thirty-five PM. We reconvene back into open session in, at exactly nine-fifty-two PM. Number one, employment resignations and retirements. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. I would ask the board to approve the employment resignations and retirements as discussed in executive session.
Hearing the recommendation, do I have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Lopez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weaver, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Number two, discussion and consideration to reemploy probationary contract employees to include teachers, librarians, counselors, nurses, and administrators. Dr. Carmen?
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. I would ask the board to approve the reemployment of our probationary contract employees to include teachers, librarians, counselors, nurses, and administrators as discussed in executive session.
Hearing the recommendation, do I have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Mr., Mrs. Weaver, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lopez, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Number three, discussion and consideration to renew term contract employees to include teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses. Dr. Carmen?
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. I would ask the board to approve the renewal, renewal of our term contract employees to include the teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses as discussed in executive session.
Hearing the recommendation, do I have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Ms. Silva, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lopez, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.